May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on March 13th, 2025, in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8th, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on February 28th, 2025. The Daily Record, the Star Ledger, and Parsippany Focus tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video-on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please? Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mr. DeVita?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Rayo?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell? Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for our student committee reports.
Yes, I'll be doing PHHS and PHS today.
Okay, great.
Yeah, starting off at PHHS. Good evening, all. Let's get started with this month's Viking report, starting off with the central student council updates. Student Council recently wrapped up their annual events, host senior standouts held on February 28th, and Spike Night hosted at PHS on March 3rd. Just to recap, Spike Night is a cross-town volleyball tournament which brings students from the hills and high together for a night of spirited competition. All money collected is donated to the NJASC charity Ava's Voice. Moving on to other PHHS events and updates, here's some highlights from events and initiatives happening through our PHHS. Our spring musical, Mamma Mia, will take place next week, March 13th, 14th, and 15th at 7:00 PM. Please come out to see our amazing PHHS players and all their incredible work that has gone into making this performance a reality. Junior prom paperwork will be available to students starting March 10th. The Class of 2025 will be hosting a T-shirt quotes fundraiser. E-cards can be purchased for $25 with a $50 value, with 100% of the proceeds going to the Class of 2025. The latest date to place an order is April 25th. The PHHS Boys Lacrosse Team hosted a spirit night with Chick-fil-A on March 11th from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Chick-fil-A donated a portion of sales back to PHHS Lacrosse. From March 10th to the 13th, 11th grade students will take the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, NJGPA, in ELA and Mathematics, a key graduation requirement. The TV production class reached an impressive 15,000 views on their Eminem Super Bowl commercial project, shattering the second highest video count on ParHills TV by nearly 10,000 views. Well done. The United Club will be hosting an Autism Awareness Fundraiser, selling T-shirts for Autism Awareness Month for $20. All orders are due on March 18th, and all proceeds will go to United Club Activities. The PHHS Boys Baseball Team will be hosting a Chipotle fundraiser on Saturday, March 15th, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The Chipotle is located on Route 10, Morris Plain 07950, and 20% of all event sales will get donated. The Class of 2025 partnered with Duck Donuts for a fundraiser. The Lucky Duck Assortments available for $25 per dozen, with orders due on March 12th. PHHS will participate in the ReLive for Life event on May 10, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the PHHS track. Students, staff, and community members are encouraged to join Team Viking Nation in support of the American Cancer Society. The PHHS Senior Internship Program is seeking businesses in Morris County to partner with us for our senior internship program, which runs from May 12th to June 19th. And the FBLA SLC event was from March 10th to March 13th, and we had one team qualify for NLC from the event MIS. All right. Moving on to PHHS athletic updates, everyone who wants to stay updated on Viking sports, scores, achievements, and events should follow the ParHills Sports Instagram page, @ParHillsAthletics. Swimming success at meet of champions, excuse me. A PHHS student placed first in the 100m Backstroke and third in the 100m Butterfly at the meet of champions. Well done. The 200 medley race team also qualified for the event. Three PHHS wrestlers placed at the Region 3 Tournament and are heading to states in Atlantic City this weekend. Congratulations. The following are the upcoming Viking Games. The Color Guard Team will be competing on March 22nd at Hunterdon Central Regional High School, and that's going to be it for this month's PHHS report. Thank you. And now I'm going to do the PHS report, yeah. Good evening. I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parsippany High School, and I'm so excited to share this past week's events with you. These past two weeks have been filled with excitement, starting off with our Red Hawk Way Day. Each half of the marking period, our school loves Red Hawk Way Day. It is such a great opportunity to get involved with the career fair and partake in community activities like peanut butter jelly making. We all love it so much. A few of our student council members actually got the opportunity to host their own workshop. It was similar to the one our student council hosted at the winter conference. We gave students the opportunity to complete an escape room about time management and then gave tips on how to better their time management skills. However, according to some students and staff, there's been some desire to go back to office hours days. Not only did it give students a chance to catch up with their teachers after school, but it also gave half day of learning, so there would be, so there would be school going on. Our spring athletics are set into full motion. Sports like baseball, lacrosse, and track are getting their preseason practices prepping for games and tournaments. Our school is so proud of the hard work that our student athletes are putting in. Both PHS and PHHS hosted the Friendly Rivals Volleyball Tournament, and we are proud to say that PHS won. It was a great competition between the two schools, and we are proud of everything that they have accomplished. We're so proud of the group of students who visited Knollwood Elementary School on SEL Day slash Red Hawk Way Day, where they were able to connect with the kindergarteners and eight teachers in classrooms while having a great experience. As our school gets ready for prom and junior prom, our junior class is hosting a Gertrude Hawk Sale, where the person with the most chocolates sold gets a free JD ticket. What a great initiative. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any questions for our student? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have our presentation, Mr. Tony Solomini for the bond refunding. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Solomini from Alent Goldman &amp; Spitzer. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the second reading and final adoption of the refunding bond ordinance that's on your agenda tonight. Normally lawyers come with bad news, but I'm actually coming with good news. This is an opportunity for the district to save money, and assuming that their funding works, it's direct taxpayer savings, because the savings will be apparent in your debt service fund. So it doesn't give you any flexibility within your general fund, but those savings are just less of a tax levy that you'll raise from your taxpayers. So just to give you a little bit of history, in 2006, the Board of Education issued about $47 million worth of bonds. Those bonds have been refunded over the years, and the bond issue we're talking about potentially refunding now refunded about $12 million of those bonds in 2015. When those refunding bonds were issued in 2015, they were issued with what we call a redemption provision, meaning that if the economics were beneficial enough, the board could take those bonds out of bondholders' hands to refinance them at a lower interest rate. So that's what we're proposing today. The resolution establishes basic parameters around the sale. We're going to sell the bonds competitively. That bond sale is scheduled for April 30th with a closing of May 20th. That resolution also establishes general parameters for the sale. Whenever we sell public securities, we have to prepare an offering document, which is similar if you've ever bought a stock or bond, you get a prospectus. The resolution also authorizes your business administrator to work with a financial advisor to get a rating of these bonds will be rated. It'll make them more marketable to the investment community once they are rated, and this resolution will also authorize your business administrator to accept those bids on the sale date, and for your business administrator and your board president to sign the closing documents. Just a couple important things to note. This sale cannot happen unless we achieve at least 3% net present value savings, and that's a safeguard in place for the, for the public entity to make sure that professionals don't make money, that investment bankers don't make money, and there's no net savings available to the public institution. So we're not allowed to go forward with this sale, even if you adopt the resolution tonight. We're not allowed to go forward unless we can achieve that 3% present value, and even if we have the sale on that day and we don't produce the 3% net present value savings, we can't award to that bidder on that day. So there is a safeguard, a minimum savings threshold in place. Other kind of safety guarantees in there for you, we're not extending the life of the bonds, so the final bond matures in 2031 on the old issue. These bonds will mature in 2031, so we're not extending the life. And the other requirement is we have to take level debt service savings throughout the life of the issue. So if we save 80 or $90,000 in year one, that has to be the savings pattern throughout the life of the issue. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I thank your business administrator for being receptive to the opportunity and for the finance committee, I know, when I appeared previously, to be welcoming to the opportunity, so.
I'm used to a net present value number being a number as opposed to a percentage. So it's 3% of 15 million or 450,000?
Yeah, so it's, it's 3% of the amount that we actually refund is how it's calculated. So roughly, we had an initial analysis done. You were about, in our initial analysis that the financial advisor ran, it was about 5%, which was roughly $700,000, which equated to about $100, $107,000 a year in net present value savings. So it's a pretty substantial savings to the, to the district.
Have the rates changed at all since we did that analysis?
So the world has been unique, so as we, yes, slightly unique. The bond market has been somewhat stable, which is good, and usually some instability is usually good for the bond market, because people usually flight to quality and flight to kind of being conservative. So rates have been somewhat stable. I think, I think the premise was rates were going to go down this year. They haven't really gone down. They pretty much stayed stable.
When you say rates, which rates? Are you talking about government, like say the 10-year bond, or you're talking about municipal bonds?
Municipal bonds.
Okay.
Yeah, so the rates you guys will pay back on the debt.
Any other questions?
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think at this point, we have a hearing of the public for the bond refunding only. There will be a hearing of the public later in the meeting for any other topics, but the, there will be a hearing of the public for this bond refunding only. Okay, it doesn't look like anybody would like to do that, so we'll move on to the next
Good evening, everyone. As we've been saying for quite a while, the budget's tight, money is tight, and we've done our best to balance this budget for the upcoming school year. With that being said, we'll go through the presentation. Budget timeline, well, you know, the Board of Education means tonight's tentative adoption. The total budget amount cannot change. Items within the budget cannot be altered. So we have a public hearing and budget adoption scheduled for April 24th, but in the interim, there's Board of Education meetings on the 27th of March and April 10th. We have the Parsippany Troy Hills Mission Statement, which is the mission of the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. In partnership with families in the greater community, is to challenge and nurture all students academically and to develop confident learners who are compassionate, generous, appreciative, and invested in their diverse world. This will be accomplished through innovative opportunities that inspire lifelong learning, critical thinking, and problem solving, creative exploration, and democratic collaboration amongst students and staff. Our strategic goals for our five-year strategic plan. Our first goal is that the members of our learning community will design student-centered opportunities that require active student engagement and the authentic connection to real-life experiences that strengthen creative problem solving, critical thinking, leadership, community service, and social impact. And our second goal is that members of our learning community will receive support for social and emotional awareness, mental and physical health in order to flourish, demonstrate empathy, and celebrate the diversity of all. We have a 2025-2026 budget directive, and that is to adhere to the following goals in the construction of the 25-26 school operating budget. First order of business is to maintain and control expenses in the operating budget with the goal of achieving an end-of-the-year surplus and optimize capital reserve. Provide adequate funding that does not diminish to the greatest degree possible current services to students, including facilities, an upgrade where feasible, security, and support of the goals of the strategic plan. To ensure a tax levy of 2% inclusive of SGLA spending growth adjustments and bank cap and support current expansion projects. We have our budget development parameters. The district cannot sustain its current spending patterns due to the following reasons. There's a tax levy increase of only 2%, salary increases of more than 3%, health benefit increases of more than 12%, vocational school tuition increases of more than 4%, charter school tuition increases of over 21%, and state aid was increased by $231,171, as we all saw. However, what they didn't tell us was that that didn't cover the charter school increase of $237,316, so that left us with minus $6,000. So balancing the 25-26 budget was not easy. The initial draft of the budget was approximately $3 million over cap. The administration is proposing the following actions to bring the budget into cap, and that's going to be the elimination of two administrative positions. Four teaching positions, one nursing position, four maintenance and custodial positions, three secretarial positions. We are no longer going to be able to continue with our lead teacher stipends as they're no longer sustainable, and they'll be removed from the 2025-26 budget, and our secondary substitutes will be eliminated and replaced with internal coverage at our secondary schools. I would say that when we eliminate those positions, what I will tell you is that there's two administrators that are retiring, so we're not going to hire those, we're not going to put those positions back in the budget. We're going to move people. The four teaching positions, their retirements, we're just not going to refill those positions. We just can't do it. The nursing position is also retiring, and we're not going to refill that position. The maintenance custodial positions are currently posted, so we have nobody in those positions currently, but we're going to take them out of the budget. However, the three secretarial positions, there are non-tenured teachers there, so we're going to have to, you know, do something there. It's not really pleasant. If we go back at the revenue sources? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, balancing the budget. The administration is proposing the following revenue sources to balance the budget. The use of a healthcare cost adjustment of $270,276, an athletic participation fee to assist with transportation costs, which would be $50 at the high school and $25 at the middle school. Field trip transportation fees, we're going to have to start having people pay for those trips, because we just cannot afford to pay for those trips any longer with, we're in negotiations with Local 32. We have issues with, you know, transportation, the cost of fuel. We're going to be charging for high school parking permits, $25 to park the car at the high schools, and student activity fees of $25 at the high school and middle schools. I wish we didn't have to do this, but if we don't do these steps, other steps would affect programming, and we just don't feel that that's appropriate. We just can't, in my opinion, I'm not an advocate of, of affecting programs. That's just not something that I would want to do. We tried our best, all of us, to come up with a solution that we thought was fair and equitable for all parties. We made what we think is the best of the worst decisions that we could make, and it's just unfortunate, but we cannot continue down this path with a 2% tax levy. It's just not going to, it's not sustainable, and I have told everybody from the beginning of the school year in my letters that I wrote, it's just not sustainable. With the building that's happening in town, too, it's, it's going to be difficult, and we're trying our best here. This board has been excellent at what they've done to try to ensure that people can keep their positions, that we are giving our students the best education possible. It's getting more and more difficult, I can tell you that. Ms. Tedesco?
Our next slide is our revenue sources. This slide shows how the budget is funded here in Parsippany. 86% of the budget is funded by local taxes, followed by state aid, which makes up about 8% of the revenue. Federal and state grants make up 2% of the budget. The rest of the budget is funded by miscellaneous revenues. The budget appropriations slide shows that 42% of the appropriations in the budget are for instruction. Employee benefits is approximately 18%. 12% goes to support services such as media, child study team, guidance, curriculum, and supervisors. 8% of the appropriations are allocated to maintain our buildings, and 6% is to transport our students. 6% is for administrative, including our tech department. The final 8% of the appropriations is to fund capital projects, equipment, health, legal, and audit services. In the 25-26 budget, we have capital projects that include HVAC replacements, door, floor, paving, and concrete replacements district-wide, elementary classroom space addition, technology, infrastructure upgrades, security camera replacements, and instructional equipment. So how are the taxes calculated? Here, the tax levy for 25-26 is $161,985,350, including the debt service. On a home valued at $314,365, the taxes will increase $163.43. Just a reminder, the upcoming dates to discuss the budget are March 27th and April 10th, with a public hearing and budget adoption on April 24th.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. First of all, thank you very much. I know this has been especially tough, and you're, you're facing a lot of headwinds. For example, the 2% cap on revenue is a huge headwind, and we've got inflation, and this is the second year in a row that we've had inflation that exceeds the, the tax levy cap. So, and then I saw there was, I believe it was a 12% increase in health benefits. So that's a huge headwind for us. So again, I want to thank you for, for all the work that you've done to get us to this point, because it was, it was very difficult. And, and in general, when I spoke at the state refunding hearings, a lot of towns are having the same problem, and they've had the same problem for a number of years as far as like the, you know, the mismatch between the, the tax cap and, and expenses because of inflation. So again, I want to thank you.
Thanks, Jack. I appreciate it.
I also want to thank you and, and your teams for trying to, seems like almost doing the impossible, but, so thank you, thank you for the work. I have a couple of questions. Can you explain to me why this, or what is the necessity of the district to pay vocational school tuition costs and charter schools tuition costs? Both that went up.
Because there's resident students in, in the district.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Because there's resident students that are in the district that attend vocational schools, the vocational school, Morris County VOTEC, and charter schools.
So if a student from Parsippany goes to Morris County VOTEC, we have to pay that?
Yes.
Okay. And following up, the charter schools, can you explain that to me, please?
There's students that enroll in the charter schools. It's mostly unity charter.
Right.
And we are charged a rate by the state for those students to go to that school.
So this is, this is a mandate of the state?
Well, it's, it's, the charter school, they run their tuition through the state. The state, I guess, approves their tuition.
So then, I guess the next question is, maybe you, you may or may not know this, is that even though the state aid increased, there was the offset of the charter schools, the offset, was that a number that, based on any calculation? Like how do we come up with 237,316 for the charter schools?
So when, the day that we got state aid, you get the state aid number, and they tell you what your increase, or you look at it and you figure out your increase. But also that day, you get your charter school tuition, and when I did the estimate for the charter school tuition, I didn't know that it was going to be increasing that much.
Right.
So I found out, because it comes in the same packet, that I got an increase in charter school tuition and an increase in state aid that did not cover it. So we just made it a point that, yes, we did get the $230,000 in state aid, but it didn't even cover the state mandated charter school tuition.
Hmm, interesting. I have one more question, Madam President. So do you have, what was the district's net-net on this? Was it net loss as far as aid, or was it a push, or like how did it work out?
So we got 200 and...
Percentage-wise.
Yeah, we, we lost $6,000 of what you're at.
Right. So the district lost $6,000, $6,000, which doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it is a lot of money when you're trying to, to squeeze things together.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. And again, thank you for the work. It's, it seems impossible, but you did it.
Ms. Tucker Wright?
Hi, I have actually a statement from Ms. Chappell, and I would like to jump on her eloquence as well, so please have her, on her coat heels here. Thank you, Mrs. Tedesco, Dr. Sutter, and the entire administrative team for preparing the 25-26 school budget. In a time when funding is limited and expenses are soaring, you have managed to craft a strong, responsible budget that prioritizes the needs of our students, staff, and our schools. The challenges facing public education today are no secret. Rising costs from insurance, utilities, and supplies to transportation and technology are putting immense pressure on our resources. Simultaneously, funding is limited to a 2% increase cap, forcing difficult choices and demanding creative solutions. This will only become more difficult over the coming years with the influx of students expected from the new construction in our community. Despite these obstacles, our administrative team has delivered a budget that demonstrates both fiscal responsibility and a deep commitment to educational excellence. This isn't just about numbers on a spreadsheet, it's about the future of our children. They've worked tirelessly, analyzing every line item, exploring every avenue for efficiency, and advocating for every dollar that will directly benefit our students. This budget reflects their understanding that a strong education is an investment in our community's future. They've demonstrated their commitment to transparency and accountability, ensuring that every dollar is spent wisely and effectively. Their work is often behind the scenes, but their impact is felt in every classroom, every hallway, and every student's success. Mrs. Tedesco, Dr. Sutter, and everyone involved, your hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to our children's education are truly appreciated. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Wright. I appreciate it. And listen, again, if, if there was another way around this, we would do it, but we think that this budget is the best of the worst. We think that this budget... We think that this budget does not affect programming for our students, does not take away, to the greatest extent possible, their programs and their education. While some people were not filling positions, there's a limited number of people that are losing their positions, which is, for me, important. I don't want to see anybody lose their jobs. It's just a difficult situation, and I want to thank Robyn and everybody that's on the staff here that helped us and the board for your support. It's never good, but we tried to do the best that we could.
I just have, I'm definitely not going to be as eloquent as Mrs. Chappell was, but I just wanted to see some of the numbers. Obviously, the vocational school and the charter schools are not kept to the same 2% cap that we are, which is why their cost could go up twenty-one percent? Is that true?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay, I mean, I don't know how else it could go up twenty-one percent if they're not at the same cap.
The charter schools are not held to that same 2% cap.
Okay.
I believe the vocational schools have different areas where they can increase, but they generally are on the 2% cap.
Okay. And then the health benefit increase of 12%. In numbers, my understanding is that's pretty close to the same amount that our actual tax cap can go up. Is that, am I close on that, or is they, they're not?
Can you repeat that?
The 12%, the health benefit?
Health benefit, yeah.
Increase is, like, over a million dollars? Like, it's a really big number. I mean, you have 12% in here, but I just want to get a sense of the actual dollars.
Two, almost three million?
Three million dollars, right.
It's a 12% of thirty-two million?
Yeah. It's thirty-two million now, well, what I'm proposing.
Oh, okay.
Or thirty-one, four ninety-eight.
I think you have thirty-two in the budget.
In the budget presentation?
Yeah.
So that pretty much eats up our entire 2% tax cap that we're allowed to use. So all the other increases of inflation, of, you know, our contracts, every other one of those increases has to pretty much be taken from some other expense in our budget, because there's no revenue to cover any of those expenses.
That is correct.
Okay. And then the last comment I just want to make is, we've heard from the township during all these pilot agreements, that the township, that the school district gets every penny that we ask for, which I agree with. However, we are obviously very limited in the dollars we can ask for, and those dollars do not cover, as we just, they don't even cover, or they cover just barely the health increase, never mind the increase in everything else. So I just want, you know, the public and everybody to understand that these tax increases, and nobody wants to increase taxes, I just want also to make that clear, that was also, you know, that's never an easy decision either. However, that doesn't even cover our general increases in our expenses. So I want to just appreciate the hard work that you guys have done, because it is, you know, we've had years where we have been tightening our belts, and tightening our belts, and tightening our belts, and there's just nowhere else to go at this point.
That is correct.
So, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tedesco, was there any correspondence to come before the board?
No, there's not.
All right. So we're up to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Okay. Committee reports. Dr. Wright with Teaching and Learning?
Yes, the Teaching and Learning Committee met on February twenty-fourth. Present were Mr. DeVito, Mrs. Mayer, Mrs. Kogan, Dr. Mulrooney, and myself. We reviewed several books for English Four, Mythology, and English Four True Crime. There were updates to following curriculum, or to a series of curriculum listed in the bulletin. I think one of the longest chunks of discussion was the work that Dr. Mulrooney is doing. It's a committee of administrators and teachers working on AI. They're meeting monthly to evaluate different teacher-facing AI platforms and figure out how can AI best be used to support teachers' work at this time in the future. Kind of one of the questions, following policy that the Policy Committee is doing, there will be, on what the student-facing side of things will be, this is particularly what Dr. Mulrooney was discussing, was how teachers might be using AI and how they can best provide professional development in that area. Also, we got an update on summer program planning, and we also, as per the board's collective goals, worked on creating due diligence questions.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Wright? All right, Mr. Barrios for Policy?
Thank you, Madam President. Policy met March sixth, twenty twenty-five, in attendance were myself, Mr. DeVito, Ms. Chappell, Ms. Kogan, Dr. Mulrooney, and Ms. Benos. So key discussion points, we reviewed, we did a comprehensive review and discussion on the following policies. There was a new policy introduced, P twenty-three, sixty-five, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence, AI. That's a new policy. We also reviewed policy P fifty-four, sixty, which was high school graduation. That was a revision. We did a review of P eighty-five, hundred, food services. It was revised, and there were two policies, eighty-five, forty, and eighty-five, fifty, that were abolished. We reviewed policy ninety-one, sixty-three, spectator code of conduct for interscholastic events. That is new. We did a review on that. We also discussed our due diligence questions, and we then talked about, and was going to be brought up, that we are looking at trying to put a priority list of priorities together, of policies together, or even bylaws, to review every year. I believe Ms. Benos may have mentioned, or maybe with someone else at the table, there's a list of like twenty-five policies that all the staff has to be given every year. We thought that might be a good start, to start there. If anybody else has any thoughts about that, I'd be more than happy to hear. This was something that we started talking about in twenty twenty-three, excuse me, twenty twenty-four, and it's back on the table, so, and that is my report.
Any questions for Mr. Barrios? Mr. DeVito?
Just a quick comment. So, you know, I was on Teaching and Learning, about talking about AI, and then we brought it into policy. Wanted to thank Dr. Mulrooney and his staff for going through, very diligently going through, and finally comprehensively, you know, finding a good policy that we're doing here tonight. So just wanted to thank them for all that work on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It is a big undertaking, for sure. All right, Mr. Rea?
Just a general question. Would we consider the AI policy kind of like a, we're not speeding ahead, but, you know, we've kind of, we've got some, it looks like we've got some cautions in place, some brakes if we want it. So would you characterize it that way, Dr. Sutter?
Guess I would say that we're trying to regulate what's going on in the classrooms.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Abraham, do you have Transportation?
Yes, thank you. Transportation met yesterday. Present were myself, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Kogan, Mrs. Tedesco, Mrs. Tiffany Pisa, and Mrs. Benos. And the committee discussed the following. We discussed route renewals for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and the district was contacted by STA to renew the home-to-school routes for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and the district and STA negotiated a 3% increase. The new vehicle purchases for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as well. The district will be using the lease purchase funds to buy one twenty-nine passenger van and one nine-passenger transit van. Morris County Votech routes were also discussed, and the district is currently driving two late bus runs for Morris County Votech, as well as several athletic runs, and the district hopes to drive these routes into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Other than that, the Township of Parsippany has contacted the district to once again do their routes for summer camp this coming summer. And in addition to that, we discussed questions for enhanced committee due diligence as per our board goals. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Abraham? Mrs. Mayer, do you have a superintendent search update?
What?
Superintendent search update?
We met with our person.
Oh.
We met with Kathleen this evening, and she went over our next steps, as well as telling us that she met with the administration, the public, who else did she meet? PTA. And she talked to them and got some of the concerns, or some of the things that they would like to address. So she was very thorough with that. She said they were very open and welcome, and they welcomed the opportunity to do that. I think it was the, the public was very appreciative that they were included in that. And we had our time with her, and, you know, she's collecting the different people that are applying, and she's going to weed through them, and at our next meeting with her, we will look at some of the resumes and kind of see if there's anyone that we want to weed out, or people that we really think are worth seeing. But she has a really good handle on what she's doing. She's spot-on with meeting with everybody, and I think that all of the people that she's met with appreciate the fact that they're included in this. So I think it's a good thing.
And the surveys are still open, I believe. So the survey, you know, is out there, and, you know, please feel free to fill it out so that there's more information coming in. And, yes.
Julie left out one important part. The consultant went to great lengths to say that in the years she's been doing this, the accolades of the community, the staff, towards the superintendent were bar none. Dr. Sutter, you are definitely well-regarded in this district. So thank you.
Not after tonight's budget, but I really, I mean, I appreciate that comment, because this is a wonderful community, and I really have enjoyed my time here, and I tell you all the time that I consider you friends, and I've met a lot of nice people in this community, and it's just awful that I have to end like this, but I think, again, we try to do the best we can for the people here. Thank you.
Are there liaison reports, or anything else anybody would like to discuss? Mrs. Abraham? Sure?
I just want to mention that there was an event that I wanted to talk about. It's called Imaginary Pets. It's ongoing right now from March third to twenty-sixth at the Parsippany Library, and it's basically Littleton Elementary kindergarten drawings that were reimagined into ceramic sculptures by the Parsippany Hills High School Advanced Ceramic Students, and it's an exhibition that's going on right now at the Parsippany Library. And on the twenty-sixth, there's a closing reception outside the children's library, where you can enjoy some refreshments, meet your high school artist, and take home your sculpture. So it's a very sweet exhibition. Thank you.
Mrs. Mayer?
Couple of things. I want to just mention that on the twenty-eighth, I went to Town Hall for the Ramadan celebration. It was kind of last minute, so I don't think many people knew about it, but it was a really nice celebration. They were very thankful that they're being recognized again by the town, so it was just a very lovely time to be there. I also went to see Moana Junior. I hope, it was awesome. It was so good. I don't know if anybody got to go, but the choreography, the singing, it was just, it was really well-done. Mrs. Kogan and I went to see the STEAM Pathways Impact Gallery, the walk that was here, and we saw some of the things that the students had designed, and they are Impact Gallery. It's things that they've designed to kind of handle issues that are ongoing. For example, there was one person who did something about shaken baby syndrome, where there was a monitor that she created that would monitor, you know, babies. There was another, there was just, the wealth of knowledge that these students had was amazing. They worked so hard, and this was all from them. You know, they did this all on their own. And the last thing I mentioned was the Mount Tabor Read Across America. I was there yesterday, and, you know, the kids really appreciate when people come to the school that aren't part of the school, you know, they have visitors, and that was just a really wonderful time to go.
Anybody else with a liaison report? All right. As you can see, there's been a lot going on in the district. There's a lot on the bulletin. I am very pleased that the contract with the Teachers Union has been extended through June of twenty twenty-seven, and I'd like to personally extend my thanks to the union representatives that worked with the district on that, and I believe in the twelve years that I've been on the board, we've never had a contract, you know, ready to go before that last one expired, so this is a really big deal. As Mrs. Mayer mentioned, I attended the STEM Pathways Project, and she did a very good job of describing it. I do have their programs, so if anybody wants to read about their projects, I do have that, so you can get a sense of what they were working on. I did not attend the Central SCL Day last Friday, but I heard very positive feedback that the students really appreciated having the time to connect with one another. And as a business owner who works with a lot of clients and businesses, I know that soft skills are critical, and these types of activities are helping students realize that positive interactions can happen without a screen in front of you, which is, you know, doesn't happen very often at schools anymore. And then this morning, I was at Mount Tabor for Read Across America, where I read Madeleine Finn and the Library Dog to Mrs. Venezia's second-grade class while wearing a green cape. I don't know if you got to wear the cape, too? But it was, it's a good experience that I, you know, I really appreciate reading. Superhero reading, yes. And then I just also like to remind the board members that, you know, we discussed the budget, and we will discuss the budget at the next few meetings, but questions are always welcome. Mrs. Tedesco, you know, is used to answering questions at the budget, because we definitely want to make sure that all of us understand, you know, what's in that budget. So I just want to remind you that it doesn't have to be just tonight's presentation. Okay, so now we're up to approval of minutes for the regular and executive minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion?
Ms. Kogan, if you'd object for a minute. Didn't we not have two executive sessions? I think they were separate times. So we vote on each one separately?
We, we had a before and an after, right?
Yes.
So should we vote on the, I guess it were different people, the different ones, so...
That, yes, there's difference.
Okay. So let's, first we'll do the first exec, we'll do the regular meeting and the first executive session, and then we'll have another roll call for the second executive session.
That's fine, sure.
Okay. So this is roll call for the regular meeting and the first executive minutes of February twenty-seventh.
Did we do a first and a second?
Oh.
That's what I was waiting for.
We didn't. Mrs. Abraham and Mrs. Mayer, thank you.
I was looking down, I was like, ready to... Mrs. Abraham?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffa?
Upstate.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
All right, and now I need, should we have another motion for the second executive session?
Correct. This would be a motion to approve the minutes of the second executive session of Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
All right, so can I have a motion for that? Dr. Wright? And a second, Mr. Rea? And now the roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Recuse myself.
Mr. DeVito?
Recuse.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffa?
Upstate.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Superintendent Bulletin Number fourteen, Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Kogan. Good evening, everyone. The CMS Science Department is hosting a STEM Family Night at CMS on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. All are encouraged to attend. Speaking of the STEM, I want to thank everyone for their contribution to our STEM Pathways Impact Showcase at the board offices on March fourth. Impact Showcase at the board offices on March 4th, it was quite, I wasn't there, unfortunately, but Mr. Rickert told me it was quite a spectacle. Read Across America, we had our Read Across America celebrations continue to take place throughout the district. I applaud the efforts made by our district elementary staff. Celebrations include dressing up like superheroes for their reading as a superhero theme, an international reading night, collaboration with middle school students, and one book community reading program, and Reading Week, which includes SEL activities. Want everybody to know that our district administrators will be meeting next week for our annual staffing meeting, and during this meeting, we will address staffing needs for the 25-26 school year. The month of March begins, and it's extremely busy, and I want to thank Mr. Rickert for all that he does to ensure that we get this done properly. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bulletin Items 1 through 29, with addendum and read-in items 30 through 50.
Are any questions on the superintendent's bulletin? Okay, so the secretary's report, Ms. Tedesco?
Hi, everyone, on tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the 25-26 tentative budget for submission to the county. Does anybody have any questions? No, thank you.
New business, Mrs. Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the Morris County Unsung Heroes. I've never had a problem with my voice not carrying, but I guess. The Unsung Heroes program is scheduled for April 2nd, and it's going to be at the Marsonalls High School. If you were there last year, it was, it's a very moving experience, it's very long, but it is very moving to hear what these kids have done, the things that they've gone through to get where they, they are, it's just incredible. I sent out everybody that email, we're trying to buy gift certificates for all the kids, so, you know, whatever you want to contribute would be greatly appreciated, so that I can put that into the pot, and they can do whatever they need to do to get these gift certificates. I really would need it before the end of the month, like by the next meeting, so that I can give it to them to buy the gift certificates. But I hope that you can put it on your calendar to try to be there, we do have somebody nominated from the high and from the hills, so try to, try to come.
Okay, so we are up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign in, so you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you that you not provide your home address, but rather give the name of the town in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to Bylaw 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? You don't bite, you can come up. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our roll call vote for the superintendent's bulletin number 14, items number 1 through 21, with addendum items, hold on, number 30-
Fifty.
Through 50, and read-ins. May I have a motion, please? Mr. DeVito, and a second, Mr. Raya?
Ready?
Yeah, roll call, yes, sorry.
Another second. Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Recuse on number eight, yes to everything else.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffa?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Okay, there being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Dr. Wright, and a second, Mrs. Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.